Otter Creek, where every day things get hotter and hotter. And I've shown time and time again how the laws have been broken.
Can you repeat that one more time?
If it was not an emergency, there ain't no clerk, there ain't no sheriff.
Do you guys follow sunshine laws? That is something that needs to be done.
Absolutely. We have to follow the sunshine laws. Yes, we follow the sunshine laws.
I've clearly shown how the town mayor has taken advantage of the people and has stolen water and funds from them. And I've shown the insanity when Don, who has been on the board for over a year, fighting everything Russell says, everything Russell does, then tries to nominate him as mayor while another elected official is out of the country.
How about I make the motion that we elect Russell Mages as the mayor?
It would be a nomination.
It would be a nomination.
Okay, I'll make the nomination and what comes after is a nomination.
You gotta keep asking yourself the question, why? Why? Why would Don flip-flop like a fish out of water? Let's see if we can figure out that answer by going back in time and looking at another town council meeting that was recorded earlier this past year.
Jump back up to swearing in the new councilman. Looks like Mr. Severino's got some... attendance or what?
Don't we ask you here? Nevermind.
Not that none of us...
Okay.
Yeah, hell, babe.
I for one, don't find these town council meetings funny. Completely and totally dysfunctional? Yeah, absolutely. Those individuals sitting there, some of them, not all of them, completely and totally incompetent? Yeah. Yeah, without a doubt. And by the way, competency doesn't always come with education. You know, there's common sense, literally common sense can guide you through life. I have a master's degree. I have undergrad degrees. I have, you know, I've done education, higher education. I've been an adjunct professor for higher education. And the greatest education there is? Common sense. Just simple common sense. And it doesn't seem to exist here. And Don's about to expose that.
So Mr. Severino's got some questions about swearing in. You want to ask?
Okay, well, I'm as anxious as everybody to get the seat filled. But there are certain requirements that have to be met before the person can come up here. We all have to, we have, you know, done our requirements with, you know, make, oh, so we're certified, we're... We're certified to, not certified, but we're making it, saying that we are qualified in the sense that we are.
Remember that incompetence thing I was talking about? Well, you just heard, "recording in progress." Mary finally started recording the meeting as she's legally supposed to, right? Uh, here's what you don't know. The meeting didn't just start. As a matter of fact, I've already trimmed almost 20 minutes out of the meeting. I'm getting to the bulk and the meat of the meeting. How in the world do these people function? Now, currently, Mary isn't any longer holding the position as town clerk. That does not negate her responsibilities and the consequences of the things she has said, the things she has done, or the things that she denied doing in the position of town clerk that were illegal. All legalities still fall on her and the responsibility and the consequences of such. But that will be taken care through the courts. How'd she even get in this position in the first place? And that's what you have to keep asking yourself. Who would have even hired her? The only answer I can come up with is a corrupt mayor that wants somebody so ignorant and incompetent that they can do things without being called out on it or bring them in on it, one or the other. That way, nothing's been shed delight, right? Until now.
Not, uh, so we're not calling this and this and that. I just think we qualify. We all done that, you know, we do our campaign checks, we do everything. And last meeting or so, we flawed, the process was flawed in a sense that Dan hasn't met all his requirements.
Let me get you up to speed of what's going on because the past council meeting where they tried to nominate a new mayor and this council meeting coincide with a lot of questions that people have. Okay, number one, here's what's going on. They're trying to bring in a new council member because another seat has opened. But they didn't run an election for this seat. They're trying to appoint that person. And multiple people wanted that seat, Therese Granger being one of them, who this year they want, well, the people want, as mayor. Russell and Don, not so much, as I've already shown. So let's back up, okay? What Don is trying to say is, hey, we've gotten off of the process of elections for the town council members. This is how it works. Every town council member runs for two years. They have a term for two years. So one year, you got odds and evens, right? One year, you have three council members that get voted in as three come down. The next year, two council members get voted in as two come down. And then three, and then two, and then three, and then two. This was all screwed up this year as four council members were actually voted in. And Russell got back in, Gail got back in, we're thankful Gail got back in. Therese got nominated in and so did Zim for the four. But there should have only been three. This is the reason why here. Somebody stepped out of the seat. The seat was open, so instead of holding an election, the council appointed that person, which was Captain Dan.
And, uh, you know, we didn't know. I guess ignorance is no excuse. So I think we'll have to go back and review, basically, chapter 99 of the Florida statutes, you know? 9906199021. And they set out, they clarified what requirements have to be met before he can be approved to sit on the council.
What requirements are you talking about?
That's where, that's where I see it.
Here's Don actually trying to save the town from legal liability. He's saying, hey, we're gonna have to look this over again. This isn't right how we did it. We're gonna have to go back through Florida statutes. Don is doing the exact same thing I'm doing. He's saying, Russell, every time you open your mouth, every time you do something, it's illegal. Now, we've already shown that his own daughter, Charme, Char, Char, man, what was that name? That was, oh, Charlene, 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 Charlene. We've already shown that his daughter is against the way and the things that he does, right? Now we're showing Don is against all the ways and the things that he does. Why would Don, this past couple of weeks, nominate him as mayor?
Mr. Warm? Mr. Warm?
Uh, if there's a question involving you.
You think Mr. Warm's just in a scooter on the other end, just... Why is the town paying this man? I honestly, Town of Otter Creek, you need to demand, literally demand, your town council to actually get a competent lawyer to represent you. Because this is not okay. Now, here's the problem you have. You've had incredible lawyers in the past. And those lawyers want nothing to do with the liability and the incompetence of the people that you vote into your council. So until you put good people in your council, you're not gonna be able to secure a good lawyer.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, yes, sir.
Okay, if there's a question involving qualifications and interpretation of some statute, nobody addressed it to me, so off the top of my head, I can't give you a definitive answer. If there's an issue, it's gotta be researched. I'm not familiar with it. This is the first I've heard of it. I'd love to help, but I don't want to just, you know, volunteer what I don't really know.
On that, I should just...
It's the nature of the issue. Without quoting the statute, what is it that you're finding a problem with? May I ask?
What is the problem?
The problem is he doesn't meet the requirements.
He's asking what requirements is he not meeting?
Okay, he didn't, he didn't make a statement of qualification, for one. He didn't pay his fees, two, and, uh...
Those requirements are only due if you're being elected and we're appointing you.
No, sir.
Yes, sir.
Stuart, I'm not gonna argue with you, sir, I'm not gonna argue with you. You're free to look up chapter 99 Florida statutes. I just gave it, 9906199021. So look them up and read them and then we can discuss it. I'm not gonna argue with you.
If he's gonna be elected, but he's not. He's being appointed to fulfill a vacancy that was there. Now then, when he goes to be elected, if he runs in April, then yes, he has to do all those requirements. That's true. But in this particular case, that's not true and you are wrong.
Do you feel like these old men are gonna end up in a nursing home together, just continuing to argue the rest of their lives? It's kinda like the Muppets, you know? It just goes on and on and on. They can't agree on anything. They can't get anything done or accomplished unless it's, can I get a motion to pay the bills? Again, what bills? All they do is fight and argue. Over what? What's Otter Creek anymore? It used to be the bustling and it used to be the pride town of Levy County, where more people stayed, where everything happened. And now it's turned into a shell of an existence. Ah, and not a good shell.
Did somebody say shelling?
Read it and then we'll discuss it.
No, I just already told you. Did you tell me where I'm wrong?
Did you read it?
Yes, sir.
When?
I just read it off of yours.
This ain't even a town council meeting. This is a town circus. Did you read it?
Yeah.
When?
I just read it off of yours. How did you even see it through that face mask? Those went out of style, I don't know, two years ago. I have X-ray vision. Didn't you know my socks pulled up to my knees make me see even further? I had no idea 'cause I can't hear you. Mr. Warm? Sue us!
Stuart. Did you read it?
I mean, what it says about in order to qualify for nomination, nomination.
Right, right, and it's not.
Not for qualifying.
No, sir. We are replacing, we are getting him to do a replacement.
Affirmative, in that, in that.
Your interpretation is incorrect. He can be sworn in, he can be sworn in as a replacement.
I suggest that we table this till next month and we can get some input from, from a real legal authority and not a, from a real legal authority.
Don, if you want a real legal authority, you need to have a real town council. And that means Russell is out. That means Stuart is out and the people have voted Stuart out. And frankly, Don, that also means you need to get out because you flip-flop more than turtle ladies' personalities.
Mr. Warm?
Am I being described as a real legal authority or are you talking about something?
We need speakers.
He said, is he being referred to as the real legal authority or are you referring to someone else?
I'm referring to him at this point. He's our attorney. He does this for a living. We don't.
All right, I just wanted to be sure that you weren't, uh...
Oh, no, sir. Don't take it that way.
But again, in all honesty and all candor, I have not looked at that statute. No one brought to my attention until this very moment that there was some issue involving the statute. So any opinion that I might express at this point would just be a form of educated guesswork. And I don't wanna subject you to that. So I can't answer. Now, that does not mean that Mr. Stuart is incorrect and that you are. All I know is I haven't read the statute recently. So I'm telling you that honestly. Somebody wanna read the statute to me right now? I'll give you an opinion. What does it say? What is the language? Why don't we just address it?
Read it to him.
Didn't he just read the statute? What is this lawyer getting paid for? Honestly, the statute number has been, I don't know, spoken how many times now? Two times at a minimum, right? Um, and he's on the other end. What is he doing? Honestly, why are the people paying this lawyer? Why are the people putting Russell and Don and Stuart and Dan in a council position? None of them, none of them have a clue.
Read it to him. Read him the statute.
I only, I just paraphrase him here. They're easy to look up, you know, they're chapter 99, Florida statute. Each person seeking to qualify for nominations or apply a qualification, pay it with, and pay qualification before installment.
Read it to me.
He's reading. He just did.
I can't get off the computer to go look it up. I wanna stay on the meeting. So if you would, if it's just a paragraph or something like that, you read it to me. I can address it. Can somebody?
Give it to Mary and let her read it to me. Well, he's had paraph, these are paraphrasing here.
Okay.
The top one and this.
But if it's not, if it's not saying...
Mary, Mary, reading is scary now too?
It's saying it's not yet, yeah.
He needs to read it in context.
So if you put off till the next meeting.
He needs to look it up.
Nobody brought that up prior to, so nobody's had an opportunity to...
Ignorance doesn't excuse us from doing.
That means that Gail shouldn't have been voted in. Stuart shouldn't have been voted in because they didn't pay qualifying fees for an election?
That was a body.
That's, that's, that's something he can deal with.
I say we swear him in.
I say we swear him in.
Mr. Warm, you see any reason why we shouldn't swear him in?
Let me tell you what Don's real issue is here, okay? Once the seat on the council opened, they asked for people who were interested to, we'll just say, apply. And Therese Granger was one of those individuals that applied. And they asked Captain Dan to apply. Russell wants Captain Dan. Don wants Therese Granger. So this is where the instances is conflict is happening. Because Don wants Therese and, well, Russell knows Captain Dan will go along with anything he says and does. Dan sleeps in the meetings, doesn't look at anything and doesn't go against anything. Russell wants the yes man. And Don wants Therese. And now there's conflict, which is extremely interesting as we fast forward almost a year later and we have our meeting where Don goes, I nominate Russell. And the other council members go, well, we nominate Therese. What has happened to Don during this timeframe? Don during this timeframe has fought Russell on everything, everything. What has Russell got on Don? And what has Don done that Russell knows? Because I can't figure it out.
Yes.
My suggestion, only thing I can recommend practically is that the motion be paid to the adjournment swearing in. Until this research may...
Mr. Warm? Mr. Warm? Those three qualifications are for if you're going to run for office and get elected. We are not having him run for office and get elected. We are appointing him to fulfill a vacancy and we're doing it the same way we have always done it.
That statement rubs me so wrong. We're doing it the way we've always done it. Okay, so if you've been doing it wrong for a year, is it okay to keep doing it wrong for another year? If you've been doing it wrong for 10 years, should we just keep doing it wrong 50 years? Should we keep just doing it wrong? You can't even get your lawyer able to hear you or you to hear him. Should we keep that process as well? Or should we maybe make things right and make things better? Side note, there are some in Otter Creek that would lead you to believe that there have been microphones in the meetings. There has never in the history of the meetings ever been a microphone. Ever, ever. There's never been a microphone. There's always a recording cassette to record the meeting. And then there's the Zoom laptop. And maybe once or twice, Mary had, had speakers so we could hear the lawyer. There has never, ever been a microphone. But you know what? That's the way it's always been done, so we might as well keep doing that, right?
For as many years as I have been here.
It doesn't mean it's right.
Whether you agree or not, Mr. Severino, we're doing it the same way. Now then, when he gets to be election time, then yes, he has to pay the fee. He has to fill out the paperwork and he has to get all that other stuff done.
How long is it?
I have to get to that. You may be completely correct, but this, Mr. Severino is taking issue with that. And I'm saying that if he wants to act on his inclination, he needs to make a motion. And the motion is either approved or it's not approved. That, that, that's the way he would, he would go forward. What he says is...
It ordered?
That it should wait until next month. I don't necessarily agree, but that's, that's between...
Do you wanna make a motion, huh, Ross?
I make a, I make a motion that we table this for next week.
You got a motion for?
What do you, what do you, what do you mean by next week? You mean the next meeting?
Till we can, I'll second it. Till we research it, yes. And make sure, yes.
Everybody in favor?
I'm in favor of that.
I'm not in favor of it because...
I'm not either.
Both of these were sworn in.
If it was wrong, it was wrong then. We didn't know it was wrong. It's gonna be wrong now. We know it's wrong.
They ain't no telling how many people has been sworn in. It's a two-two tie, Mr. Warm. Can we go and swear him in?
Motion fails.
What do you?
I say I swear him in.
Let's swear him in.
I, you're, it's gonna be challenged and I'm gonna have to go wherever I have to go to. Just the one you should maybe advise the mayor about the seriousness of this, that the action he's wanting to take right now.
And you might wanna ask him also.
Right now, he knows it's not right.
You might wanna ask him also.
You think I'm the first person to have a beef with Russ the sus, Mary, Mary, Stuart, Stuart? I didn't ever catch that before. Stuart, Stuart, Mary, Mary. Huh. Maybe they got something going on, who knows? Uh, no, I'm not the first. There have been many, many. And here, Don specifically states, you better know your legalities because I'm gonna challenge this and I'm going after you.
Stuart.
What is Don saying? Don's saying, Mr. Warm, lawyer, you better give him the right counsel because I'm going to go after this legally. Now, here's what's happened after this. Nothing. Don never sued the town because, and this is just my opinion, but it is my opinion and I think it holds validity and weight. Because nobody in this town has the money to actually secure a lawyer and do it and go forward with it.
We need money.
Until Jeremy Hales comes around and gives them three years of leniency and grace and mercy. And now, all Hales has broken loose.
At the time, might wanna ask him at the same time, Mr. Severino, what the ramifications are for when a councilman who gets up and just walks out of a meeting?
There's no ramifications.
Yeah, Don gets so mad at Russell that he actually gets up and just leaves meetings. And he gets paid for it. Uh, Stuart, on the other hand, this is kinda funny hearing this from him because Stuart literally runs.
Mary, will you swear, Mr. Stuart?
Hey, you're making a big error here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna challenge it wherever I have to go. Like, I don't know why you won't wait and do it.
And do whatever you want, Mr. Severino.
Why wouldn't you do it? You wanna do it the wrong way. Why don't you do it right?
Okay, that's enough on that.
We've seen the way you do things right.
I make the decision. If there's any repercussions, only it'll be on me.
Ask yourself the question again. How in the world could Don make all of these legal threats? Could Don fight again and again against Russell? And then now, instead of voting for Therese Granger as mayor, he still wants Russell? What is going on in Otter Creek? I truly believe there's something I've yet to uncover.
I'm gonna let you read it. Okay. Repeat after me. I'm sure.
This is gonna be null and void.
Please repeat after me. I...
I, Dan, Dan.
Having been duly elected to office...
Having been duly elected to office.
I do swear or solemnly affirm...
I do swear or solemnly affirm...
That as a duly elected council member of the Town of Otter Creek...
That as a duly elected council member...
Excuse me, you said you're appointed. It's not an election.
Exactly. Having been duly appointed to office...
Having duly appointed to office, I do swear or solemnly affirm that as a duly appointed council member of the Town of Otter Creek, I will faithfully perform the duties of that office in accordance with the Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida, the ordinances of the Town of Otter Creek and all applicable laws, regulations and authorities. She got it. Sworn in. Take your sleep.
Pretty sure Russell just said, you're sworn in, take your sleep. Cause that's what happens almost every meeting.
I don't believe you can overturn that, Don. I don't believe you can overturn that way.
If it's wrong, it's not, if it's wrong, it's wrong.
If you can, good luck. He wasn't elected, he was appointed.
This, this, this...
I, I, I don't need to know. I don't know what 99 is.
And Russell's that very problem.
We're gonna move on. Don't hear me, if it builds.
The residents of Otter Creek agree with you, Don. This is a huge problem. Russell is the problem. And if you continue to nominate him as mayor, you are a huge part of the problem. But here we are with another problem. Paying the bills again. What are the bills?
Everybody in favor, pound of bills. Now, here's a motion that we approve of the minutes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second. Everybody in favor? Administration, what you got, Mary?
That door! Will somebody please take care of that door?
That's an exception around here. Our, we do have a septic tank and it is certified. Yes, we had to get help to find it. Um, with the broadband grant, we have been authorized to begin spending money for administrative costs, which means I need to open up a bank account for the CDBG CD19 grant.
Did we receive the grant?
Oh, no, not yet. This is for administrative costs. We've been approved for the grant. But, but it's in, it's in, still in engineering and, and we are going to be, um, getting, have some expenses that need to be paid. And it needs to be paid from a specific...
We've been approved.
I'm, yes, that's the big check was our approval.
The big check was just that they blanketed everything and they were taking votes on it, I thought, figuring out which communities were gonna get it, which ones didn't.
No, we got it.
You know what big check they're talking about? And what did Russell just say? We got the money. And what did Mary say after saying there is no money yet? She said, no, we got it. We got the money.
Okay.
That's down in Water Creek's money to put in broadband, yeah.
All right.
But ever, 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 grant has got, has all on account. These tons of paperwork's on. So go ahead and open the checking account.
Fast forward months ahead and we get our audit. And what does our audit state? That all of the grant money is being slushed all around in with the general funds. Huge, huge, huge financial no-no. Why can't they figure this out? I gotta open a checking account for this grant. I gotta open it for that grant. Why can't they do the right thing?
And also, um, I've been working with the auditors and there was a misunderstanding with the previous grant, phase one account, and it was taken to a $50 balance. Well, that creates service charge each month. Um, and the auditors, they had said that we could keep that account open for the phase two of this grant, that we haven't received the grant yet. for the phase two of this grant, that we haven't received the grant yet. But we're high on the approval, high on the number for likely approval for the next phase of the water grant. And with permission, may I bring that account up to the minute, to the $5,000 balance, which was in it to begin with? And that, that stays in there. So that when it's approved, if it's not approved, if we don't get it, we close the account out. But they said that I did not have to close that account when we completed the grant, when we closed out the grant, phase one.
I don't think a single person followed where Mary was going with that.
So what do we need to do, put some money in the account?
Yeah, we need to put some money in the account, so it's service charging every month.
We got, um, we gotta have it in there anyway. Hello?
We need a motion for that.
Just moving money on the account.
You should be able to do that.
I think, I think that's it for the moment.
Well, maintenance, parks and recreation, ain't much on that.
Park's dry.
Park is dry, well, well, let's go ahead to maintenance, talk, and talk about the septic tank for just a minute. The guy that pumped the tank says the drain field is okay. But when the water gets over it again, it's not gonna work. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to put the above ground drain field in, without a doubt.
We're gonna have to do what?
Put the above ga, above ground-
Above?
Drain field in, yes.
For some of you who live in big cities, you probably don't even know what a septic field is. But you know septic man now, but that's besides the point. Okay, so when you flush the toilet, all of that nasty stuff goes to a place, and it's all cared for, and it's all chemically broken down, and it's purified into at the end result. When it drips out, you should be able to drink clean water. But, a lot of people who aren't hooked up to a natural sewage system like that, they have what's called a septic tank, and a septic field, and a drain field. So George and I have one here at Hales headquarters. We have one at the ranch in Florida. We have two at the schoolhouse property. So if you're not hooked up into a main system, you have to have your own operating system. And we've already shared this in the past. Not only do they have that drainage septic field, they even put their AC on it. That's what I love about this little town, they're so resourceful.
Pop it in the drain field.
The drain field, though, as it is, is okay as long as it doesn't get water over top of it. Gets flooded, correct?
It will, when it, when it-
When it gets raining-
When it rains, it don't flush.
Right, but when it rains, it gets water, and the water, and the ground gets soaked, and so the drain field doesn't work. But otherwise, the drain field works okay.
That's good.
Is there any other way that we can irrigate the water away from the drain field?
That's illegal.
Uh, I don't think we can drain Otter Creek.
I'm about to drain that swamp.
Let, let me, let me back up a little bit, and listen to more of that story. The air conditioning unit is sitting on the front of the septic tank. So it's gotta be moved. He thinks that the inlet has grown full of roots, and that's what was keeping it from flushing. The only way to find out is to move the air conditioning unit, dig it up and see what, see what the deal is with it. And there's a good chance that it may be grown, grown full of roots. So, we're gonna try to get span to come look at it, and see about moving the, moving the unit off of the septic tank.
The good news is, we don't have to move the generator and the propane tank.
Well, yeah, because we signed that thing the other day, last time.
Well, we thought that it was over the top of it as well.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not, excuse me for my naivety about drain fields, but if you have a drain field and it works, and it only doesn't work when it gets water on top of it, because it rains a lot, is there any chance of just putting more dirt on top of that drain field so that it doesn't get covered with water, and the water drains off of it, and the drain field still works?
That's not how it works.
It's the water tables.
It's the water table pushing the sewage up.
Oh, okay.
That's why it's failing.
The only way to make it work-
Is to raise the whole drain field.
It's the down above ground drain field.
You saw Don laughing in the back, right? Like, can we just pile more dirt onto it, solve the problem that way? Don, you're doing the exact same thing now. You're just trying to pile more dirt on the crap. And you're trying to do it by voting Russell back in. I don't know what your angle is. I don't know what you know that I don't know. I sure am gonna try and find it out.